Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good afternoon. It's my honor and pleasure to call to order the 5:15 special city council meeting of July 10th, 2019. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Smith.
I'm here.
Freeman.
Here.
Sullivan.
To comply with the Brown Act, we'll receive public statements now. Please limit your comments to the workshop item only at this time. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. Are there any public statements?
We've received three public statement cards, two speaking regarding the city manager recruitment, and one on a separate subject.
Thank you. Would you please call the first?
First speaker, Mr. Curtis Bingham.
Welcome.
Oh, yes, welcome. To the Honorable Mayor and the Honorable Board. My name is Curtis Jane Bingham, Senior, St. Evangelist, our Lord and Savior, God Almighty, Jesus Christ, who truly is the only begotten Son of a holy heavenly Father, God Almighty. Thank you very much for, and God we trust, and something our Lord and Savior really appreciate. Now, I got to say one thing, Mayor. Last time I left, when I mentioned that, what I mentioned about the city manager, you said you didn't take up an offering for him. So...
Would you like to put in the first million?
No. I thought I thought of you. I have three registered pieces of paper here. You know, I did this April of 2018. I wrote to Mark Zuckerberg, owner of Facebook, Bill Gates, and Oprah Winfrey. I asked them for $120 million for our law enforcement, fire, our district attorney and the sheriff's office. Why did I do that? Because we have a wonderful, beautiful town, and it's not good when you see them not being funded. The Bible says that the rich shall communicate and distribute. It also says that money shall answer all matters. So I did that. Did I get any response? No. Nobody responded. But for me, as been a citizen and servant of the Lord, I was doing whatever I thought I might be able to do to help out our beautiful city. And so when I mentioned that the city manager should be given a million dollars, I mean it with everything in my body. And we have the money to do so. And 27 years of service, that seems like a lot, very little, for him to stand in there and do what he did for our city for a long time. And it's a shame for him to have to leave just on the retirement pay or plaque or dinner. People worry about a million dollars because they want it, but you know, you can't take something that belonged to somebody else that put in the service. And our city manager has done an excellent job, and all it takes is the right members to put something together for him big, show his appreciation, because he's done a good job. The city of Bakersfield loves you guys, and this is one reason why they voted at 1% in. It's in now, and it's time for you guys to get your blessing too, because if I had it my way, this is just me, each one of you guys will be receiving around $50,000 just as a payment for what you have done. And it's time for you guys to put something together for yourself, because you don't please God, this don't please God Almighty, this ain't the way he work. If you notice your Bible, when he had his priests, he gave them his portion of the people brought down. So it's about time everything's getting better here, bigger here. You gotta take care of the people that's taking care of you. We giving all these other people money, but you guys don't get nothing. Am I favoring you? No, I'm just doing what's right. And Mayor, you're the mayor of mayors. You definitely need to be being blessed, but you guys need to put something in and quit being shy now like we just here for the money and go on and do what's right, because the money's here now, and the Lord want all his kids to share in it, you know? And so I hope we do that, look at our city manager, put something together for him, and prepare yourself for our city attorney. I don't know how long she be here, but she done saved the city a lot of money. The Bible says money will answer all matters, and it's a beautiful thing to bless your servants. So I pray you, somebody's got the power to do it. You guys really need to start doing this, because the public won't mind. They love what you guys doing. We doing so great in Bakersfield, and you guys are excellent to sit up there basically getting nothing and show that you guys some beautiful people willing to do this. So it's time to get something.
Thank you for your kind words. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, I pray God bless everybody, and I just forgive you what the Lord gives me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Nick Ortiz.
Welcome, Mr. Ortiz.
I think we've, I don't think we need the second item, because I think we found the next city manager for the city of Bakersfield, Mr. Bingham. He is a tough act to follow indeed. I'm Nick Ortiz. I'm the president of the Greater Bakersfield Chamber. Appreciate the opportunity to comment today. Gave you copies of the comment letter that we submitted with, along with our friends at Kern Tax on this issue, and got to you earlier today. Just wanted to, first off, congratulate Mr. Tandy and tell him that I moved back in 2006, and throughout the years, I've had opportunities to work with him since I've been at the Chamber. I've had opportunities to work really closely with Mr. Tandy, and I've appreciated him and wish him well. And I want to thank Mr. Tandy, city attorney, all of you on the council for having this session in public. You could have done this in closed session, so I appreciate you doing this in the open. And from the perspective of the two options that were given in the staff report that accompanied the notice for the workshop, obviously, in the broad strokes, we prefer alternate B, so we believe that there should be a national search with a third-party recruitment firm. Obviously, we understand that city staff and the human resources department is incredibly talented, but I know that they are very busy trying to make sure that the will of this council, the will of the voters, in terms of all of those funded positions from the public safety and vital services measure are carried out, and that is a big task on its own. The other piece that I think, you know, we've heard some comments from some of you and others about in our letter is we believe that once this recruitment gets underway, that there should be some public process with the finalists, you know, given our current form of government, of the council manager government, and the fact that the city manager really is the day-to-day leader of the city, we think there should be some public forum with the finalists. And so I did receive some concern about confidentiality, and so I did a little research in San Antonio, Texas, in Austin, Texas, in Glendale, Arizona, Newport Beach, recent city manager recruitments where there's been some public component to it. So those are our comments, and we look forward to seeing how this develops, and we're here in any way, whether it's giving the consultants a sense of the community and what the business community is looking for from city government or otherwise. We look forward to this process, and again, thank you for doing this public session.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mike Turnipseed.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the problem is when you speak third, there's really not a lot to say. So Alan, I hope you have a nice retirement villa somewhere after the, Madam Mayor went to France. I'm sure she found some nice places that would be nice places to retire. You can find a nice place in Europe, front of a million, especially in Tuscany. I mean, not in Paris, but in Tuscany, you can find nice little places, little towns. Nick covered the bases here, but the idea is critical, that it be open, transparent. It will generate trusted results. Anything that happens in the back rooms, people will always question. After reading through the materials that were set out for this meeting, I see Mr. Tandy had a long list of things he was supposed to get done. Was that the original list that you got when you became city manager? Oh, no. Well, there's probably a few more things could be added to that, but we'll be talking about that at a later date. Just for information's sake, as we've been involved for the last few months in this, there are several things that I requested during the process that I have not seen as far as being able to evaluate what you do. I asked for a deferred maintenance list, equipment replacement lists, and I think anyone coming in worth their salt will be asking you to see the same things when they're making the decision of, when they get to the end of the interview and you say, "Do you have any questions?" I think there will be some very interesting questions at that time, so it's an interesting process. Thank you for doing this in public. Hopefully, everything in public, because the public needs to see and be involved, and hopefully, we can have more than eight people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item A, city manager selections.
We still have a council member who is missing, and she's delayed. Is there a benefit in maybe waiting?
Honorable Mayor and members of city council, a staff is making no recommendation on this
I forgot to read that.
Okay.
I forgot to read that.
matter before you this evening.
Thank you for your patience.
However, I do want to point out that Kristi Tenter, our human resources manager, has
A staff memorandum was received regarding item 3A, transmitting correspondence from
worked in firms that are in the private sector in this field and been on the public sector
the Chamber of Commerce and Kern Tax Payers Association.
side. And any questions you have about process, procedure, methodology of how these operations
Thank you, and I think that's the one that we had received earlier.
work, I would encourage her to be the first source for your inquiries. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I appreciate the comments from the Chamber and Kern Tax, and I've had about six other phone calls saying essentially the same thing, mainly stressing that, number one, this is a council responsibility, and they want the council to handle it, and number two, that they, they recommend, and I agree that it needs to be a nationwide search with a professional search firm. I'm not sure there's any other way to effectively do that, I mean, do it but that. I've had quite a bit of experience in using search firms and hiring executives, and in public institutions, we always formed ad hoc committees of our colleagues who would do some of the heavy lifting and then report back to us and recommend us with, it's just a more efficient way to proceed. Because there, my experience with search firms is you need to interview them pretty intensely. You'll have a lot of follow-up questions, so you'll have to call them back. It may be numerous times to get clarification until you finally feel like this is the right fit. It isn't necessarily the firm that does the best brochure. We have six brochures. They all sound real good. It isn't the best firm that would come down and make the best slide presentation and a one-shot deal. It's, it's the people you grow comfortable with by getting their history and listening to them, so, so I prefer that we form an ad hoc committee of colleagues on the council. I'm prepared to make a motion to that effect, but I think other council members may have comments before we do that, so, once our comments are done, you know, I'll take a shot at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Tandy, for 27 years. Didn't, a lot of council members came and went and didn't have to go through this. I agree with some of Councilmember Freeman's comments, and I agree completely with what I think I heard the Chamber and Kern Tax say, that we should stay as public as possible as long as possible. I'm sure at some point, when you're doing individual interviews and stuff, then you need to, you know, go to closed session with that, but I would prefer to stay public as long as possible, and I, I see a conflict with that and the idea of using a committee. So I would lean towards, you know, having the whole council be involved in all of the decisions. I do agree, you know, there's no question, we need to do a national search, and I think, you know, there's plenty of professionals that are capable of doing that search for us, and so, yeah, I would like to move forward with, you know, maybe selecting one or two of those or three of those tonight, and, and have them begin the presentations as soon as possible. So that's kind of where I'm at. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the Chamber and Kern Tax for being here today and providing some of their input. I think it's important that, that we do have a public process throughout the entirety of this process as much as we can, understanding that perhaps in the interview process, we will have to move to closed session. And I also like the idea of receiving public input at some point in this process. It reminds me of when I was on the Bakersfield City School Board, and there I had an opportunity to hire actually two superintendents with the Board of Education, and during that process, the consultants that we hired actually engaged in a community meeting or two where they solicited feedback from various different stakeholders and got ideas as to what characteristics they would like to see in the next superintendent, and so perhaps something similar can be established with the consultant. I am in favor of alternative B, the, the hiring of a consultant for a national search. And finally, I just believe that this process is the responsibility of the entire council, and I think it's important for the entire council to go through this, from selecting these, the firm, to selecting the next city manager.
Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the Chamber and Kern Tax for being here today and providing some of their input. I think it's important that, that we do have a public process throughout the entirety of this process as much as we can, understanding that perhaps in the interview process, we will have to move to closed session. And I also like the idea of receiving public input at some point in this process. It reminds me of when I was on the Bakersfield City School Board, and there I had an opportunity to hire actually two superintendents with the Board of Education, and during that process, the consultants that we hired actually engaged in a community meeting or two where they solicited feedback from various different stakeholders and got ideas as to what characteristics they would like to see in the next superintendent, and so perhaps something similar can be established with the consultant. I am in favor of alternative B, the, the hiring of a consultant for a national search. And finally, I just believe that this process is the responsibility of the entire council, and I think it's important for the entire council to go through this, from selecting these, the firm, to selecting the next city manager.
Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. It goes without saying that this process will be a public process as much as possible. There will be times when it is not to the city's advantage to have a public process, and at that point in time, when we are allowed to go into closed session, we will be necessary to use closed session. I understand the need or the desire for certain people to want to involve the entire council in the entire process. That, to me, is unworkable. It's very cumbersome. It is difficult to get council members to special meetings. There's going to be a lot of special meetings required to get this job done and to get it done right. There will be public opportunities for input. There always will be. I've been through this three times before, as Andre's been through it before, too. There's always time for public input. There's always time to speak with candidates. There's always time when the recruiting firms will want to speak with all the stakeholders, find out what your opinions are, what your options, what you're looking for, and the type of person that we are all looking for, the perfect fit for Bakersfield. That's all-inclusive in a program or a process that we put together, and it's aimed to streamline the process. It, it doesn't really need seven council members to go sand the rough issue, sand the rough edges off of particular issues, but ad hoc committee can do that relatively efficiently, report back to the entire council on what we found and what our recommendation is, and of course, when we're done with that, there are seven people to get to vote, and it would be a public vote. So I am totally in favor of an ad hoc committee. It's the only way we're going to get this done in an efficient manner. Doesn't mean that we have to hurry. It doesn't mean that we have to have this done by December 1st. It'll get done when it, when it's right, when we get the right candidate and we have the right person in a position to step in and carry Bakersfield forward. So I am totally in favor of the ad hoc committee, and I encourage Councilmember Freeman to make that motion, and let's get this process started. We have a lot of work to do, a lot of research to do. It's a very intensive process, and we need to get started. Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman.
Mayor Go, I, I'd like to make a motion directing the Vice Mayor to appoint an ad hoc committee of three council members for the purpose of vetting the available referral firms to retain a new city manager and return to the council with a recommendation of which firm to choose. At that time, we'll discuss further need for ad hoc, for the ad hoc committee. Thank you.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes. I didn't see any other requests.
Excuse me, can I?
Councilmember Smith.
Could you repeat that, please?
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion directing the Vice Mayor to appoint an ad hoc committee of three council members for the purpose of vetting the available referral firms who will be charged with retaining a new city manager, and for the ad hoc committee to return to the council with a recommendation of which firm to choose.
So the motion is for the, all the interviews of the firms to be done with the committee, and the rest of the council doesn't see until the recommendation for the one firm is chosen? Is that my understanding?
The recommendation may be for one firm, may be for a selection of two firms.
I thought, I thought you said it when the firm was picked, the way that you read the motion.
A recommendation, to bring forth a recommendation, most likely for one firm, but it might be, you present, here's two firms, would you like to present the information and have you vote for the best one? But you're correct, the interviewing of the firms would be done by the ad hoc committee.
And does that, I would have made this questions for staff. So that committee is public, or that committee is closed?
City Attorney.
Mayor, Councilmember Smith, if it's an ad hoc committee appointed by the Vice Mayor, it would be, it's separate from the Brown Act, and it would not be open.
I do recommend that in the city management profession, a city manager works for the, is appointed by, removed by the full council, and candidates will want to know the full council, is the party selecting them. I also have strongly recommended that any aspects other than personal interviews stay in open session for the reasons discussed by Kern Tax and the Chamber.
Yeah, as state, I think I still have the floor, I'm sorry. I still believe we should stay open as long as possible, and, you know, if the logistics are a little tough and it takes a little longer, as you said, you know, it happens when it's right, but to me, it's still more important to be public as long as possible. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I, I see Bob's position, I see Bruce's position. I, I think that it could get, when you're talking about, let's say, six firms that we're looking at, and we're not talking about candidate selection, we're talking about firms, you know, a firm that we could potentially hire to help us find the right candidate. And when that time arises, when we have that firm in place, you know, they're going to bring those candidates forth, and we're, you know, we're going to make a decision as a, as a body. But I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Bruce, but you're talking about, you know, boiling down the firms, you know, while we're going through maybe brochure design, or, you know, how they present themselves online, or font size, or something like that, to boil down those firms to a manageable, you know, couple or three, whatever the case may be, and then bring it back to the full council to make a determination of, you know, what that recommendation was, and make the, the best decision as a body? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's correct. Someone has to spend time interviewing these firms, and it isn't one interview. It's just not the way you can do it efficiently, so then, a committee of three is a more efficient way to do that. Compile the information on, here's the best firms, here's one we recommend, but then bring it to the council to vote all seven people on which firm to choose. You can have a recommendation, the three people may make a recommendation, but that doesn't mean the council has to go along with it. They can still say, well, from what we, you reported back to us, we like firm B rather than firm A, but it's just, it's doing some of the heavy lifting that is very difficult to do with firms coming down, coming back, coming back, interviews, and I don't see, I've never seen that done, and I don't think it would be a successful process to get through this, just to bring a recommenda, we're just trying to bring a recommendation of a firm. We're not, we're not choosing a city manager yet. We're trying to get to step one to get something done. So that, you know, that's the reason for my, for my motion, and that's, you know, that's why I kind of, that's the best way to go.
And at that point, when we come back, then we decide from there where we want to go.
Yeah.
Correct?
That, yeah, we decide after, we're just trying to make a decision ultimately on what firm to choose. That's all we're talking about today, not what city manager to choose.
I could see where, let's say we had firm one through six, that firm six would definitely be an advantage, I would think, or firm four or five, too, because if they, you know, saw the questions ahead of time, I think that maybe a firm one would definitely be at a disadvantage if it was, you know, everybody was in the same room and the same questions were being asked, they'd have an opportunity to maybe prepare a little bit better. That being said, I, I support the motion of, you know, as long as we're talking about the firm, and, you know, we'll come back as a, as a body and go from there. Thank you.
Councilmember Weir.
I will cancel my request.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, to repeat, that's the purpose of having the ad, the ad hoc, and repeating and keeping in mind that this is for the firm, and it is going to take reading and evaluating and perhaps telephone calls, and, and I, I think three of our council members, that, that's a good, would be a good reason to have the ad hoc, and that is the reason to have the ad hoc, so, so I think it would be to everybody's advantage to do the preliminary weeding out, and perhaps they will feel that it's when we get down to, it all depends how many we have to begin with. I, I think that the use of an ad hoc is, it would be very appropriate, very helpful to all of us, and so I, I am in favor. I certainly appreciate Bob's position. Yes, it's important to have things open in public, but there will be plenty of time for that, when it, when we're talking about individuals and, and candidates, but this is, this is just the firm, and I will appreciate really the time spent to help the council come up with the, with the best firm. Thank you, so I will support that.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't know who's going to make up the ad hoc committee, but I think that's an relevant point, and I think it's been said by a few council members now. This is, this is not the important step in my mind. What we're doing is hiring a city manager. I want to say that to whoever's watching and to the folks in the audience right now. In the event that we want to make this an issue, this is really not where we, I think where we should...
where we should fall on a sword. So I'm very interested in an ad hoc committee getting through that vetting process as quickly as possible. We didn't talk at all about timing, but I do think that's an important thing. I don't necessarily want it to sit out there for two or three months, because I think the most important part is advertising for as long as possible, getting the word out as much as possible, and then, in full agreement with, I think, everyone on the council, bringing that decision back to the full council for its deliberation and consideration. So I'll support the motion as well.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, I've heard a couple of times, so that the committee is finished once the consultant is picked. Is that correct? Is that what the motion is?
Councilmember Freeman, would you like to read that again?
Is that what the motion is?
My last sentence was, and I think this is appropriate, once you've formed a committee, at that time, the council will discuss if there's a further need for the ad hoc committee. We will still have to decide, how does this process get managed? But that's for another night, and some additional thought.
So what we're voting on now is that the ad hoc committee is finished until further directed?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Parley.
Well, I was just going to add that, well, we have committees for a lot of things, and the purpose of committees are to boil down the topic for a council, especially if they're, it's an arduous process. Now, Bruce, just again, re-clarify your thoughts one more time, because I hear maybe some other council members, you know.
Read it again?
Yeah, just one more time, yeah.
All right. I keep changing the word a little sometimes because I'm trying to be a little even more clear, but the motion is to direct the Vice Mayor to appoint an ad hoc committee of three council members for the purpose of vetting the, vetting referral firms in order to retain a new city manager and to return to the council with a recommendation on the referral firms. Not on the city manager, on the referral firms. And I said, at that time, we will discuss if the council wants to use this committee, has further need of it, we'll discuss it at council and make that determination as a council. Okay.
Anything further, Councilman Parley? Okay, seeing no other requests to speak, you have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Gonzalez voting no.
Thank you. And so that actually concludes the business that we have on the agenda today. This last week certainly has been one with a lot of consternation for our communities with the earthquake, and I want to thank staff. This happened very, very late, and we were called upon to offer media comments and to constantly keep our constituents informed, and I just want to thank staff for your responsiveness, both Assistant City Managers, I know you were on call, and our chief, we sent, our police chief sent officers and a sergeant to Ridgecrest. I know Fire Chief Galleguez has sent several teams there. We had a lot of appreciation expressed from the Ridgecrest team. I spoke with Mayor Breeden. We corresponded a number of times, and we also made our municipal airport available. And then I heard yesterday that we sent people to check on the infrastructure, and all through this, you were all really very, very responsive to the media, and that's what our community needed, was just that assurance, that the assurance that they were safe and that we were looking out after their best interests. I was able to communicate that whenever asked, that we have full confidence in our city team because our practice in doing what they have been practiced so many times. So the emergency operations process was put there, and just encouraging our citizens in their own families to be able to take on the responsibility of being that informed and practicing it. But staff, thank you so much for your responsiveness at very inconvenient times. And seeing that we have nothing else on the agenda, we stand adjourned.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, there you are. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, my thought process is I agree with Councilmember Rivera in that picking the firm is not something I'm going to fall on the sword for, and it's not as important, but it is important as we move forward to be as public as possible. Thank you.
Any other requests to speak? Seeing none, we stand adjourned at 5:51 PM.